Good evening, indivisibles. How are we tonight? Is everybody fired up, ready to go? All right. So good to see you tonight. Let's see, Tig, next slide. All right. My name is Ray Allen Smith. I'm the president of Indivisible Albuquerque. Thank you all for coming. I just want to briefly introduce the other board members here. Amanda Santana is here. She's at the back, working on the Zoom. We have Michelle Benton, who's our secretary. She is our timekeeper for tonight. So you guys will look down at Michelle and she'll show you if you have 15 seconds, 30 seconds, or need to quit yapping. Claudia Cleese, our treasurer, is here, way up at the top. Okay. Chris Hayward, our parliamentarian, is here. Thank you. Thank you very much. Willie Orr, our outreach coordinator, is here. Thank you, Willie. Kathleen O'Malley is here. Oh, wait, okay, way over there also, towards the top. Thank you, Kathleen. Laura Nunez is here. Okay, I saw her. Oh, there she is. Raise your hand. There we go. All right. Tiffany isn't here tonight, and Milo is here somewhere, too. So that's the Indivisible Albuquerque Board. Want to thank you all for coming. Next slide. Please, most important thing, if you don't mind, mute your cell phones, keep the side conversations to a minimum. Please buy food and beverages from the lobo that helps us keep our meetings here at no cost. So that's important. Okay, let's see. Well, that's not going to show. Next slide. All right. So just want to spend a minute talking about October 18th, the No Kings Day Rally that we're organizing. Well, it's not a rally, it's a march, right? So I have a graphic up here, a little bit of a map. We're going to ask you to line up along Central between Sixth and Second Street. So pick a corner. Indivisible Albuquerque will be leading off the march. So if you want to march with us, wear your blue t-shirt and join us at Second and Central, and we'll lead off the march and head down to Lomas. We go all the way to Lomas on Second, and then we turn west on Lomas, go past the robots, and pass the courthouses, and turn south on Sixth Street. And then we march down Sixth Street, and we wind up back at Central. So just a few things. We have a QR code up here. We do need chanters, people to lead chants along each block of people as they progress through the march. And we need people to help with sign distribution, and we also need help collecting donations to offset our costs. So if you can do any of those volunteer jobs, feel free to scan that QR code. I'm hoping some phones come out. Scan that QR code, really need some. Starts at noon, ends at 2:00. October 18th. It's a Saturday, October 18th. Okay, a lot of work's going into this, so we hope to see thousands and thousands of people on the street. That is the goal. Do you guys know about that? Do you guys know about October 18th as a day of action? Awesome. Hope to see you there. The interesting thing about this is there's no speeches. We're just marching. We're taking to the streets. So that's our goal. Okay, we're going to skip that for tonight, and we'll get back to the Health Care Committee a bit later. So tonight, we're going to have Mr. Matthew McQueen, and then we'll have our City Council District 3 forum. Mr. McQueen, I'll give you the microphone. Come tell us all about your candidacy.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me. So I feel a little bit like an opening band, right? You all came out to see the show, and I'm like in the way of the show. I also, I'll tell you, this is a nice venue, a great sound system. I can't see a damn thing. So it's like, I like to talk, I like to be able to see people who I talk to. Oh, that's a little better. So my name is Matthew McQueen, and I'm running to be your next state land commissioner. So first, I'm going to talk a little bit about the race, and then I'm happy to answer some questions. The Land Office is a really important agency in New Mexico, and a lot of people, you know, really don't know what they do. Land Office is, they're about 190 employees. It's a $20 million annual budget, and their mission is to earn money for education, and they're really good at it. So when we became a state in 1912, the federal government gave us a bunch of land, and they said, "Here, take this land, and you're going to use this land to fund your schools." So there are 21 beneficiaries of the Land Grant Permanent Fund. They are primarily public schools, public universities, and public hospitals. The Land Office takes in over $2 billion a year. That money goes into the Land Grant Permanent Fund. The Land Grant Permanent Fund is currently $35 billion. And just by perspective, you know, our annual budget at the state is $10, $11 million. So $35 billion is the second-largest sovereign wealth fund in the United States, second only to Alaska. It pays out at about 5%, and that is a big chunk of our public education funding. So that's the good news, that we're doing really well. The bad news is, we make 97% of our money from oil and gas. 97%. So that's obviously a problem. What I think the urgent mission is of my campaign, and if I'm land commissioner, is to diversify the income of the Land Office. So they hold in trust 9 million surface acres, 12 million mineral state. And if you think about that, and you're making 97%, 98% from the mineral state, that means you've got 9 million surface acres that you have a lot of opportunity to do something with. And that includes renewables, right? Wind, solar, geothermal. New Mexico has tremendous resources for renewables. On appropriate parcels, it could be commercial projects. So if you think about like the Mesa del Sol area, which has become sort of a technology and energy hub, there's a bunch of state land, state trust land up there that could be used for that purpose. Again, on appropriate parcels, you could do housing projects. And the State Land Office can help with affordable and attainable housing, and help address our housing crisis here in New Mexico. And because they own so much land, 9 million surface acres, you can do all these projects while at the same time protecting our conservation lands, and our agricultural lands, and cultural uses, including hunting and fishing. So a little bit about me. If you've heard my name before, it's probably because I'm in the legislature. I've been in the State House for the past 11 years. I will finish out my term. I'm not running for reelection because it was one or the other. I've also been an attorney for over 30 years. My practice is real property law. So everything the Land Office does is something I've already worked on. Purchase and sale, leasing, water rights, mineral rights, commercial projects, housing, affordable housing. These are all things I have done in my law practice, and my specialty happens to be conservation easements. So I've been doing land conservation for over 20 years. As I said, I'm in the legislature for 11 years, and for the past nine years, I have chaired the House Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee. All of my background, and this wasn't intentional, all my background relates to the Law Office, Land Office. I actually had a reporter ask me, he looked at my resume, and he said, "Did you do this on purpose? You know, were you building a resume to run for this job?" And I said, "No, this is actually just things that interest me, that I get excited about, that I think I'm pretty good at." And I sat down with some of the current Land Office employees, and they were telling me some of the projects they were working on. And these are sort of long-term projects, so these are things that aren't going to be done when our current land commissioner, who's term-limited, Stephanie Garcia-Richard, when she leaves, like, these projects are still getting in the pipeline. So we need someone to come in and continue that work. But these projects, I mean, I literally get excited when I hear about these things. Like the new housing project outside of Las Cruces, that will include affordable and attainable housing. The land swap within the Oregon Mountains Desert Peaks National Monument. So when they created the national monument, which was primarily federal lands, there are state trust land in holdings within that national monument. You know, obviously, that's not an appropriate place to do development. We don't want to do the development there, but we're also not earning money for education because those lands are within the national monument. So the federal government directed the Bureau of Land Management to do a swap with the Land Office, and those lands will become part of the national monument, and the Land Office will get other lands in exchange that they can use for their mission, which is earning money for education. Education is fundamental to our democracy, public education. And make no mistake, public education is under attack. You know, and I think of this, and it's, to me, it's similar to reproductive rights. The Republicans always said that they were going to get rid of Roe versus Wade, and a lot of people said, "Oh, that'll never happen." And in fact, all the Supreme Court justices, when they were confirmed, said, "Oh, don't worry, that's settled precedent. We're not going to touch it." And it was settled precedent right up until the moment they had the votes to overturn it, and they did. So that had always been on the Republican sort of wish list, and other things on their wish list are getting rid of public education, and they're pretty open about this, and selling off public lands. So the Land Office is New Mexico's first line of defense. Because they own 9 million acres, 12% of the state, they're in a position to defend our public lands, defend our public institutions, and defend our public schools. And that's what I hope to do if I'm elected land commissioner. I really appreciate your support. Happy to answer any questions. Two questions. What is my experience managing an office of 200 and some odd people? That's an excellent question. If there's a hole in my resume, it's that. So the office is about, I think they have 190 FTEs, they're about staffed at about 180. I will say I have managed people throughout my career as an attorney, working in law firms and in the legislature. I think I'm pretty good at it. And to me, the foundation, there are two things. One, the foundation of that personal relationship, that professional relationship, is respect. And I've always treated people with respect. So I think that's a good start. Second thing is, I'd like to mention, I was at a conference recently, and they had a keynote speaker that talked about leadership. And he said, and I think this is largely correct, he said, "Leadership is trust, that you can lead in office if the people in the office trust you." And I think because I have the experience and the qualifications, I'm going to be able to earn that trust, and I'm going to be able to lead that office based on that trust. The question was, what's my position on drilling in the lands around Chaco Canyon? The current commissioner, Stephanie Garcia-Richard, withdrew any drilling from state trust lands in that protection area. I would continue that. She also instituted a one-mile ban on public schools, drilling within one mile of a public school. I would continue that as well. You know, a lot of the prime tracts are already leased out, but, you know, within what the Land Office has control, we, you know, we have to balance that development where we're earning a lot of money, and protection of our resources, protection of our school kids, protection of cultural resources, and I would certainly continue that. So thank you for that question. So that was two questions. Once again, Matthew McQueen, State Land Commissioner, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you very much for all the work you do in the legislature. We follow quite closely and love what you do. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a few forum rules. We're going to change up the timing a little bit. Please turn off your phones because we want to hear from you, not your campaign managers. We're going to give you five minutes total each for an opening statement, and two minutes for a closing statement. Questions will be, we'll give you two minutes for each of the responses. We'll follow this order, but we will start in a different place with every question. So you'll all have a chance to go first, middle, or last multiple times. Questions were submitted by the membership and edited by me for clarity and approved by the Indivisible Albuquerque Board. There will be no audience questions, but we do ask if you could stick around and maybe answer any questions that they may have after we're through. And we are going to record this on Zoom and would love to release the Zoom on our website if you all approve of that. Okay, is that okay with everybody? All right. Thank you. Okay, let's get started. So we're going to start with you, Teresa, with your five-minute opening statement, and we'll share the mics as we go around.
Do I come up front or stay here? I'll just have heels on, so. Hola, buenas tardes. Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Garcia. I am a Democratic candidate running for city council here in the southwest Mesa. I'm really honored to be here with you all, and thank you so much for making time for this candidate forum happening tonight. I am a first-generation Mexican indigenous, daughter of an immigrant. My mother was born in Parral Chihuahua. My father also served in Vietnam, so I'm a proud daughter. I also have two beautiful children, DeShawn and Derek. They attend Albuquerque Public Schools at a Trisco Heritage Academy. One is a senior, and one is a sophomore. So as you know, transitioning, you know, next year to somebody that's going to be going to college, I am also the first in my family to graduate from UNM with the Bachelor's of Science, majoring Biology, minor in Chem. I was in the pharmaceutical industry for about 10 years, and then transferred over to working with the Domestic Violence Coalition here as a Director of Training and Communications. And I have since then transferred over to the Maryland Coalition as well. It's a domestic violence statewide coalition. So I have seven years under my belt for statewide coalition work, working collaboratively through across systems, and making sure that we create policy, funding, and several initiatives to support programs across the state of Maryland, as we did here in New Mexico, along with trainings and education. I currently serve as the Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Commission for the City of Albuquerque. I have been doing that for the past three years, and we have really done intentional innovative work for domestic violence and sexual assault survivors here in the City of Albuquerque. That means bringing systems and domestic violence organizations together. So that means the DA's office, APD, BCSO, the Attorney General's office, Public Defender's office, and our seven domestic violence and sexual assault programs here that represent the City of Albuquerque, along with the tribal coalition that also is a member. So on this commission, and I'm just giving you a little background of the work and experience that I have, is on this commission, we have created one restraining order packet for the entire City of Albuquerque. There have been about three in existence that had different information, not accessible, and/or had outdated information, right? So we addressed that. We are actually implementing that, and we hope to have a press conference in October as it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so stay tuned for that. The last piece that we're doing is an ASL translation to make sure that we have language access and that this restraining order packet is accessible and can really support the survivor on how to file a restraining order packet, that there is a process for an emergency order of protection as well. As you all know, there's guns, you know, survivors do get threatened with guns, so we do have an emergency order protection process there, along with how to obtain your belongings. Along with that, we have also created a lethality assessment, which is an 11-question questionnaire to address guns and also strangulation when an officer goes out to a call. Not only keeps the officer safe and alerting them that there's a gun there, but it also supports the survivor and wraparound services. So these are all some, a couple actually, of the things that we have done on this commission as I have chaired it, to make sure that we create a collaborative response to the city as a whole. So now, why am I running for city council? I have lived in the southwest Mesa for 15 years, and I have seen the difference between our district and how other districts across the city look like. When I'm walking and door-knocking and meeting my constituents, what you often see is trash, weeds, a lot of sidewalks that are going a bit up against each other, and that is a responsibility as of the homeowner to, you know, pay for that and fix that. Unfortunately, my district cannot afford to do that. There's an ordinance, I believe, that was created in 1983, that it's the owner's responsibility. I would like to readdress that or look into that, to make sure that we have accessible sidewalks throughout the district, along with actually having sidewalks in the district. My children currently do not have sidewalks as they leave our community to cross over and walk to the school, and this is actually not just only at the Trisco Heritage Academy, but across the board. A lot of our community also lacks proper lighting, infrastructure. We need more opportunity for affordable housing, infrastructure, local and small business. 86% of my community is an immigrant Hispanic community, and we need more support across the board where our community quite honestly feels forgotten. And I'm so glad that you all are here because we need to make sure that we are bringing voters to come out and vote. Our district is actually the lowest turnout, 9%. Can't do that alone. I need your help. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. It is kind of strange looking out that you can barely see anyone, but thank you for inviting me to be here this evening. My name is Clarissa Peña. I am the City Councilor for District 3 in the City of Albuquerque. I've been serving the area much longer than I've actually been in office. Me and my husband, many, many years ago, when we first started having our children, we actually seen some of the conditions that we have in our community, and knowing, being born and raised in the South Valley, knowing some of those issues, we decided that when we started to have our children, that we were going to do what we could to make a difference in the community. My husband's philosophy has always been, let's leave it better than we found it, right? So we got, I got involved in the PTA, got involved in the school, got involved with the Neighborhood Association. From there, we created SWAN, which is the Southwest Alliance of Neighbors, and then from there, we created the West Central Group. And these groups have always worked really diligently over the years to address some of the historic redlining, marginalized infrastructure, lack of infrastructure in the community, be it through redlining or through the building of the interstate. As you all who have been in the City of Albuquerque for a long time know, that once the interstate was built, it took a lot of commerce off of West Central and Central as a whole, and it really started on the decline. And we've been working very hard, the West Central Group, working really hard to kind of change that, change that and create some tourism opportunities along the corridor and create economic development, jobs, jobs to housing imbalance that we have on the West Side as well. So I'm going to just get back and just say that, you know, me and my husband, we have six children. We raised them all in the Alamosa Neighborhood Association area, which is, which is close to Coors and Central, between Old Coors and New Coors off of Central. I think it's one of the best neighborhoods in the City of Albuquerque. Do we have some of the issues where we have, you know, poverty, unfortunately, with that circumstance? Oftentimes, people can't afford to do certain things or have to work two jobs. So, you know, we do have some of the issues in terms of weeds in the neighborhood, but I wouldn't live anywhere else in the City of Albuquerque. So we, and then we, me and my husband, we have our in-laws, which all six of my children are married, and we have 15 grandchildren that we actually helped to, helped to raise. So, but we love it, we wouldn't do, we wouldn't change a thing. And just real quickly, you know, my husband's here, running for council, and then now running for office, it's been very interesting because we help watch, we have four of them under four, and we're kind of watching them, and then I'm doing council and running for office. And so, you know, I just look at my husband as I'm walking out the door, and I just kind of bless him, you know, because it's a, it's a challenge. But, but anyway, so yeah, you know, I know Ms. Garcia, she talked about a lot of the issues that are there and have been there historically with, in terms of like the, the roads that she was talking about with the children going to the school. We have in the southwest area, most of the major corridors are state roads, you know, so it's really how do we address and work and connect with the state of New Mexico also in terms of bringing those resources to our area? I was just having a conversation about District 3 with another constituent, just talking about like, you know, when you all look at some of the major needs that we have in the City of Albuquerque, like the Balloon Fiesta, I think all nine council districts, the mayor, you know, people from outside the district look at the Balloon Fiesta, and they say, "Hey, we need to really look at this area and invest and address some of the issues that we're having there." But then when you look to the southwest area, you will see kind of like the visitor center on the, on the top of Nine Mile Hill. It's the first cultural asset on the West, the entire West Side of Albuquerque, right? And this is something the community fought for for many, many years when others weren't paying the attention that we needed. So we're really proud to have that asset in the area, but it still hasn't been embraced by other areas of the city as much as we really would love it to, right? The community members that fought so, so long for it. You know, I'm, I'm running, I'm running this, this term. I will be win or lose, so I'm out in November or December, but this will be the last time that I run for council. I do believe that, you know, we really need to find people in the area that really, that I have to stop. Anyway, so thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Christopher Sadio, and I want to start off by thanking all our veterans that are here in this audience tonight and any of our first responders. Thank you for your service. Also, I want to thank you, everyone that's here tonight, taking time out of your schedule to be here when you could be doing something else. Thank you for being here, and it's my honor to be here. Thank you for having me here. As I said, my name's Christopher Sadio. I am a Democrat. I am retired U.S. Navy Senior Chief Rangerman and a paratrooper who served around the world, including Iraq, Kuwait, the Persian Gulf, and several Westpac deployments. I retired from the U.S. Navy after 26 years, and then worked as a commercial truck driver for a couple years. I am an Albuquerque native. I grew up in the South Valley and graduated from Rio Grande High School in 1981. I have earned an associate's degree from St. Leo University in Florida. My post-retirement activities include Legion Post 13, American Legion Post 13, where I served as a chaplain and as the Honor Guard Commander for the last four years, doing military honors for veterans. And this, two weeks ago, I was just awarded the plaque for completing 225 military honors. I'm also a board member, who recently I stepped down to run for city council for Honor Flight of Northern New Mexico. The Honor Flight of Northern New Mexico is where we take our veterans to Washington, DC, to see their memorials, whether it's the Vietnam War, the Korean Memorial, or the World War II. If you've never been there, it's something to see, and it brings closure, especially to the Vietnam veterans who did not have a welcoming when they came home. And this is absolutely free to the veterans, and they will be provided a guardian, it could be a family member or a volunteer to go with them. I've also championed, a member of the Knights of Columbus, where I'm a fourth degree. I also champion equality, community engagement, advocating for veterans' rights, including LGBTQ+, and I am the treasurer for the American Veterans for Equal Rights. Other things that I have been part of is being a ward chair, a state central committee member. The last three years, I have worked as a poll worker to meet people, to encourage them to vote, because it's, it's all about democracy. This year, you, City Council District 3 has three fine choices to choose from, and we, they will have a choice to, who to vote for. As I said, I was also active duty, active in the Democratic Party. Last year, I was, I was elected, and I attended the Democratic National Convention in Chicago to to nominate for President Kamala Harris. It was an honor to be elected, to go there and meet many people. It was my honor to be there. One of my reasons for running for city council is to give the people in City Council District Three a voice. How many of you have gone to city council meeting and 50 people talk about one subject and they're all against, and the city council votes against everything they talk about? This is notorious. It happens all the time. I've been to city council meetings for different issues to only get ignored. My policy is to listen to the people in my district, to give them a voice, to be engaged with them, to meet with them regularly and to represent them. We also talked about the issues of streets, the cracks in the roads with weeds growing, sidewalks that are folding up and cleaning the neighborhood. There's laws already to tell people that they have to clean their weeds behind their fence, but you could go down 114th Street, Eucharist, I guarantee you the weeds are higher than this table right here. So I am running to represent District Three. I also do not have a family. I am gay, and my partner is Michael Rice. We've been together 13 years, and I will have plenty of time to represent my neighborhood and my community if elected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, candidates. Okay, Ms. Penya, we're going to start with you with question one. Over the last few weeks, President Trump announced that he's sending the National Guard to Memphis and now Portland. This is very unlike the National Guard that is already in our city. Do you or do you not support the armed National Guard troops in Albuquerque? And how should APD interact with them? You have two minutes.
Thank you. So yes, as you all know, we have the National Guard here in Albuquerque. So I was one of the only councillors that commented on that, right? So I said as long I was amenable to them being here, as long as they were not operating with any kind of use of force, or they were actually being auxiliary and helping with some of the non-emergency calls or are with the non-emergency calls here in the city of Albuquerque. So for that, I'm good with. It's working. We get reports regularly about it, and so we haven't had any incidents with the National Guard trying to do anything outside of that agreement that we have in place. As for the president bringing the National Guard out here, we haven't heard word that they're coming, but if they are, I do not support the armed. I made it very clear in my initial statement that I do not support them being armed, using any type of use of force or anything like that. And then how should APD interact with them? I mean, very similarly to the agreement that we have in place. I mean, we always will work with our National Guard. I think it's important, but for them to operate in capacity outside of what we already agreed to, I don't support that.
Thank you for the question. I absolutely do not support the National Guard to be in our streets. Their mission for the National Guard is if the governor requests it, then I would support it. If there's a need and the governor feels that we need it, then I would support that. But the National Guard has a duty to support the active duty forces for things that happen to our country that we need to defend. Their purpose should be to support the active duty, which is what they're trained for. They're not trained to policing the city, doing community policing. They're trained to assist the active duty in war if we should ever go to war and we are in combat. That's their duty, not to be police officers in the streets of Albuquerque. Thank you.
Let me be very clear that it is very concerning to me that the president is sending off the National Guard to Memphis and other places across the country, right? I feel that it's creating fear within our community, and those that are being impacted are people that look like me, people that are of color and are immigrant community. I recognize that we do have the National Guard here, right? Right now, MDC is busting at the seams with how many people are being incarcerated right now, right? So let's think about that. Not only is it overwhelming folks being incarcerated, but what resources are they being offered, right? And what is happening when there is no more space at MDC, right? I feel that it is, when you ask or send the National Guard, they should be used for emergency purposes, not to attack civilians or community members and instill fear. I do not agree with that. And then how should APD interact with them? I've seen a couple of things come up on, you know, as I'm reading on the news and that, you know, I believe APD is trying to hire the National Guard. There's some members that do want to transition in. For me and where I come from, it's making sure that whoever is policing our streets is trauma-informed and making sure that they are also being trained in culturally sensitive response and making sure that they're not doing or using use of force to attack our community members and being very cautious, right? We have to use our voices when we can and go to protests, as Mary Ellen invited us, because it might not be spoken about right now, but community is being attacked and we need to speak against that.
Thank you. Okay, let me get to question two. We all know we're experiencing a severe housing shortage in all price ranges. Many in the community feel very strongly that we should not be giving taxing incentives to developers, but instead institute rent controls and support workers. Explain your position on both tax incentives and rent control and your solution to solving the housing crisis in Albuquerque. And we start with, I think we start with you, right? Chris, Chris, sorry, I'm already confused. Happens every time. I've done many of these and I still mess that up. Thank you, Chris. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for the question. I do support giving tax incentives and for builders to increase our housing, because we do have a housing shortage, I believe, and we need to give multi-different, well, incentives using government assistance, government housing, or not government, but government property to build and do multi-b buildings, which would be commercial, not commercial, but a multi, the word I'm thinking is, different types of housing, whether apartments type of housing, including, you know, where you could have stores in the ground floor and housing above, that would be multi-housing development, different types of different. And I know some neighborhoods will protest, they don't want it in their neighborhood, they like the single housing, but we need to do infill and again, providing incentives for, you know, to build more housing so we don't have a shortage. And I believe by having an increase in housing, it will lower the prices of what people pay for rent or the housing prices. When there's an overflow of housing, the demand to get them rented out, the prices or rent will go down. So I think it's controlled by demand and supply. If we have more supply than demands required, I believe the prices will go, level out in our, in our country.
So absolutely, we are experiencing a shortage in regards to housing across the board. It's affecting everybody. In District Three in particular, we are very much a residential district, a lot of single-family homes. There's not a lot of diversity. We need more diversity in regards to housing and make sure that we have affordable housing along with workforce housing. You know, I'm thinking about, you know, when I bought my house in 2010 for, I believe, $145,000, you cannot find a house for that much, right? And then I refinanced it to get the lower interest rate, but not everybody has that, can afford that. Right now, houses are raging upwards of 300 plus, right? How much is that a month? 1,500, almost 2,000 or more? It is not affordable. And as I think about our children, our elderly, our first responders, we need to make sure that we have housing that's affordable but diverse, right? Like I mentioned, we have a lot of single-family homes. And in regards to developers, we need to make sure that when we work with developers, we need to be very careful and make sure that they hire within the district and also just because they get tax incentives, right? Like we saw what's happening in Sawmill, 227 million in that development there. It's very luxurious development where I feel it's going to impact the Sawmill area in raising their taxes and then possibly the community experiencing to have to move out of there. For me, we need to make sure that when we think about development, which is very much needed in District Three, is making sure that it is affordable to community and community has a voice and has a say to what's being developed and making sure that they feel heard and prioritized, because right now, we don't really have that in the southwest mesa, and I hope to change that to make sure that folks like my son, if he decides to go to college, he can afford an apartment to live in and there be actually an opportunity for him to find an apartment, where right now, we don't have that across the board, which is, you know, impacting again, the unhoused, domestic violence survivors, the elderly, our workforce, and first responders.
Thank you. So I'm trying to read. I don't have my contacts in, but I'm trying to read. So it says about severe housing shortage. So in the southwest area, we actually have mostly housing, and most of the housing that has been built there has been affordable housing. What we do need is we kind of need a mixed type of housing where we have some housing that's more market and then we have, and then to address, to address the housing shortage and the affordable housing part of it, the southwest mesa, what we'd need in the area is jobs. We need to bring jobs to the area. We have, most of the land in the southwest area is zoned residential. We don't have lots of plots for retail in the area, so it makes it challenging. If you look at the southwest area of Albuquerque and look at the sea of housing that's there, people who don't necessarily travel to the district, if you look at the northwest part of Albuquerque, we have like, I think the population there north of I-40 is 100, I think 104,000 people. If you look to the south, from central south, there's actually 100, and I think it's 18,000 people. So we have more people in the southwest part of Albuquerque than we do in the northwest area, and we have so much housing that we have this imbalance. And so to address the housing shortage, we have housing. What I am trying to protect in the area is that we make sure that we do not have a concentration of poverty in our area, because seeing examples like that really create, really create unhealthy communities. And when we're talking about tax incentives, I think there was some real myths, nomers about the Sawmill. The Sawmill didn't receive 200 million in tax incentives. What they did is they got an IRB that actually put the, they put the money themselves, they just had deferred taxes.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Garcia, this next question is for you. Pedestrian fatalities in Albuquerque are among the highest in the country. What is your commitment to reducing them in your district and even out of your district if you're elected?
Great question. Actually, what comes to mind is when we attended the Bike Panel, Bike ABQ, we talked about folks who are, you know, using public transportation along with biking in the district. One of the main priorities that I would want to focus on when elected for city council is making sure that we have appropriate infrastructure, better roads. One of the things that we're lacking quite a bit in our district is better lighting. There is an issue with that. There's also an issue of speeding that my constituents have expressed concerns with, right? We have a lot of people speeding down the road, making UEs, you know, like donuts, you know, you see that at the All Supps that we have, that was just built recently. And so making sure that we, when we talk about infrastructure and creating safer roads to make sure that we're taking care of people walking in the district, you know, we need to think about roundabouts, we need to think about speed bumps within the district that my community has asked for. And when we're talking about that infrastructure, let's not do the little bumps that you just kind of go over, which is super simple, but let's talk about like, because that's already wasted money, right? We're not truly investing in adequate infrastructure where we're going to have to do it again. So let's talk about like those V humps, like that's where your car rattles, and so people will slow down. But across the board in my district, because we don't have a lot of job opportunities or people actually walking to the coffee shop, much like downtown or other areas in the city, we need to make sure across the board, throughout the city, let's, I know that there's technology in for speed cameras that are coming in, so that's, I feel, something, an investment that has been good for the city of Albuquerque, and we do have a couple in my district. But let's talk about technology. Let's come up with innovative ideas to support that. And then hopefully, when we grow in District Three, you know, making sure that people are able to walk and feel safe, either walking at night or early in the morning, jogging
Thank you. I'm just going to say real quickly, when we talk about pedestrian fatalities in the city of Albuquerque, everybody thinks it's along West Central, right? And so we end up putting a lot of infrastructure and a lot to address those issues on West Central, but really, because it's city-county, it's actually on Coors by the Gun Club area. That's where the highest rate of fatalities are in the city of Albuquerque. And so when we talk about infrastructure, and I appreciate my opponent's comments, when we talk about it, we actually just installed over 200 lights. We have another 200 on the way. I actually did the speeding has a name, that was one of my initiatives. The speed cameras was one of my initiatives that I sponsored putting forward to address that. And when you talk about speed humps, I just want everybody to know that those speed humps, the reason they're built the way they are, it's a real challenge when you're really thinking about putting speed humps in a neighborhood. We have a traffic study that's conducted and it's determined whether it merits it or not. But I just want to say, you know, we, years before I was in office, we advocated for speed humps in the neighborhood, and what happens was is people that are going to obey the law go slow over the speed humps. People that aren't, they fly over the speed bumps. But when you add the speed bumps, the reason we don't have the ones that are real jarring is because of rescue, right? If you live in a neighborhood, rescue has to go through those, and they have to stop at each bump before they can go over it in order to get your loved one to the hospital. So this is the reason that we have the ones that extend a little longer.
Another great question. Yes, we do need more lighting, especially on the west side with Coorses. Another thing is implementing more cross or street pedestrian lights so they can cross. If they added more of those, I think that would definitely help where they will get, people driving through the streets will have to stop and they turn into a red light so that they can have a safe crossing. I think they've started putting some of those in downtown and we could use more of those. The other thing is we need more cops to patrol the streets. When people can fly down the streets because they know they're not going to get caught and they're going to continue speeding until we have more law enforcement, there's no control on, you know, yes, speeding cameras are great, but again, you don't get that bill or that citation for 30 to 45 days, and you either pay the $100 or it goes to collections. It doesn't affect their driving record. And infrastructure is needed on Coors. That's one of, and I guess that is a state road. Another constituent had talked to me about, he would like to see roundabouts on Sage because his backyard faces Sage, and he says he'd fly through there. So that might be another thing to do is maybe have some more roundabouts going, because it will slow you down or you'll ruin your car when you hit that roundabout. I know about roundabouts. I lived in London for two years, so I do know roundabouts do work. And again, it's all about infrastructure and lighting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to have a little fun with this next question. We're going to start with you, Councilwoman Penya. You've been on city council for a number of years. What would you do better? What would you do better if you had to do it over again? What would you do differently? What would you do better?
So, you know, I'm real proud of the work, like, sorry.
I'm very proud of the work that I've done on council. When I first ran for office, I actually ran because the community, many of the concerns that you're hearing here, that's why I ran, because, like I mentioned in my opening statement, the community has lacked investment, disinvestment, historic, historic lack of investment, marginalized, redlining. So, you know, I always say that this predated me, I don't blame any other person who held office. When you live in a poor community that doesn't get the attention it needs, you have a lot of catching up to do. So, I think that whatever predates me, they're going to have a challenge, whoever predates me, and then whoever predates them is actually going to have a challenge with some of these issues, very similar to what I was saying earlier. But I am very proud of the work that I've done. I mean, I have put forward the immigrant-friendly reaffirmation, I'm the one that sponsored that, I talked about Speeding Has A Name, I talked about the Visitor Center. We just put in a grass field in the community, this is the third park of, a fourth one on the way in the district that never had it. I led the effort on Anderson Hill, Sunset Sierra, the Women's Memorial, and now this one. And so, I'm very, very proud of it. And then I have Crestview Bluff is actually going to get a park, and this one is with the Arroyo that's right there. And then Old Coors, this old neighborhood has never had really a place for kids to be able to congregate, they have to cross a major state road in order to get to the Alamosa Park. So, very proud of that. We just opened the Southwest Public Safety Center, which is the first fire station in the city of Albuquerque in 20 years, and it is the first consolidated public safety center that will, that includes fire, police, ACS, and community rooms. I'm just really proud of all the work that we've been able to do. So, I can go on and on, if you really want that question answered, you can actually go to the city of Albuquerque, look into the website, and look at all the projects that we have going, they're so numerous to be able to even talk about here today.
Thank you. So, Mr. Sidiya, slight rewording of the question. What would you like to have seen Councilwoman Penya do differently? Over to you, Chris.
Please say that question one more time.
So, the question is, what would you like to have seen Councilwoman Penya do differently?
Okay. Well, I would say, one is be more responding to constituents, because I've heard over and over that we call city council, we call mayor's office, and we get no reply back, no answers to their issues. It's, I've heard it when I knocked on doors over and over for, to get my petition signatures, have more monthly, at least a monthly, meeting with constituents to say, hey, this is, what are your issues, what's going on, and address these issues. And if they can't be corrected or changed, what, what's the process to change something? I understand that to do a change in the road, you have to get 60% or more to make a change. But explaining it to the constituents, saying, hey, this is what you need to do to correct something or have something changed, that is like the number one. Again, there's the enforcing the laws we have right now with the weeds problems. My backyard faces 114th, and then that 114th Street is a trash dump all over, and there's no, you know, for people taking their trash, there's no third lane to have, they put these cones that are destroyed every day on the weekends. So, they need to do infrastructure to fix that. That's what I would do, try to address.
So, I would have to agree with Mr. Christopher Sidiyo, that a lot of our community, well, let me start off with this. In our district, for southwest Mesa, we have had the same representatives in office for a very long time. Our state representative has been in office for 14 years, and City Councilor Clarissa Penya has been in office for 12 years. I think that, you know, in 12 years, she named a few, you know, needs to the district that I feel have, that have been there for, since I've lived there for 15 years, right? And so, we're looking also at the Visitor Center. That Visitor Center is something that I think could have taken a little bit more input from community, because community doesn't currently use it right now, and they don't see the value of it. She might have had different conversations with, with community, or how that Visitor Center came about, but that's $13 million of taxpayer funds that could have gone to infrastructure, better roads, better lighting, a number of things. And unfortunately, that's not what's happened, right? And speaking of earlier, you know, she also mentioned that a lot of these issues take state funding. That is the work that I do and how I lead, is making sure that we work collaboratively across the board, so that's working with our county, that's working with our state, that's working with those that are in those leadership positions and are representatives, to make sure that we get the solutions we need for the district, right? I want to make sure that District Three is able to live in the district, work in the district, and actually thrive in the district, where we currently don't have that opportunity. And you've heard it be said here, you know, several times. I do feel that community has felt forgotten, and it's not just only with Councilor Clarissa Penya, it's across the board. You know, as I'm knocking on doors, constituents are super happy to see a candidate knocking on their door that's actually running for office and not somebody else that's a volunteer or doing the work for them. I am putting in the work, and I will make sure that my community has a voice at the table, thank you, and that they don't feel forgotten. And those changes will happen if we work collaboratively together to create the solutions for District Three, and we cannot do it alone, right? We need everybody to come together to create that change.
So, I would like to be able to rebut some of that, because this is outside of the line of questioning, you didn't know I was going to be here tonight, and then you asked a question directly about me, so I think I should be able to rebut some of that. So, okay. So, with Mr. Sidiyo, I agree, when we talked about speed humps earlier, speed humps, everybody wants them, we do have to have that process, it's unfortunate, but we do have to have that process. I mean, that's not my rule, that's the city rule. And then when we talk about the Visitor Center, the Visitor Center, this goes right into what I was saying about earlier. When you talk about the Visitor Center, this is 30 years of people in a marginalized community. When we say that voices aren't being heard, she's exactly right, voices were not being heard in the community, so they took it upon themselves to build this Visitor Center. And when, and they were the ones that went out and advocated for the money, they got the money, we got something, like I said, the first cultural asset on our side of town. You talk about $13 million that it took to build this, this center, it's actually, we're building, which I support, I think it's needed, but we're building a $70 million pool in the northeast part of Albuquerque, which is not a waste of taxpayer dollars. But when we invest 13 million in an area that's marginalized for a cultural asset that has something for a space and a place for the community, and it has, it has community events that we've been having there, it's been used, it is being used, we just had Westfest there. So, it's an amazing facility. I encourage all of you who have read all the articles and think that they know what's at the Visitor Center, I encourage you to go and get a tour and visit the center. And then also, did that say 30 seconds or 15 seconds? 30 seconds. And so, when we talk about the district and we talk about some of the issues, those are things, collaboration, I mentioned it earlier, that's how we got the Public Safety Center done. We just opened the field today, that's how we got that done, working with state, state-elected leaders, our county commissioner, that's the only way. If you ever hear me give a speech, just like I did today, I say that this stuff doesn't happen in isolation of each other, it happens together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, City Councilor. Mr. Sidiyo, this question's for you. Safe outdoor spaces is a city initiative for sanctioned, secure, and supervised areas designed for the unhoused to live outdoors temporarily, offering basic amenities and a pathway to permanent housing. Should the city set up more safe outdoor spaces, and if so, where in your district do you recommend?
Thank you for the question. Yes, I do believe we need to have safe outdoor spaces for the unhoused. I know that Miami-Dade had a thing that studied that they did, and they made it illegal to camp in any public or places, but they also had to provide a safe outdoor space with the basic amenities, and this is a transition to housing, where they can provide a mental health, mental health services, drug addiction services, and alcoholism. But we need to have spaces that these homeless people can go, and I would support it. Where in my district would I support it at? We have, well, we'd have to study the landscape, where there's plenty of land, we do have lots of land that's vacant all over the west side, and find a space that would, and again, I know neighborhoods will be questioning where it's at, but we need to find a space somewheres to house, to, for the homeless to have a space for outdoor. Thank you.
So, I know this is an initiative that's been spoken about and talked about. When I think about safe outdoor spaces and where to locate them in my district, first and foremost, I want to have a conversation with my community to make sure that they have a voice at the table on the decision on safe outdoor spaces. I want to make sure that those that are unhoused have access, as Mr. Christopher Sidiyo said, to mental health services and actual, and recovery services. So, I have experience working in a methadone clinic in my, when I was in my pharmaceutical days. So, making sure that they have access to those resources that are actually accessible, right? Right now, we have the Gateway Gibson Center and also the Gateway West Center, those were built to support community that are unhoused. And right now, I know that they are not, at least the Gibson one on, the Gateway Gibson one, isn't fully functioning, and we've invested a ton of money there, right? We need to make sure that when we do create spaces like that, that they're accessible to community, and it's what better serves community that are unhoused. There's a lot of organizations that should be at the table when making these decisions, as they are already doing the work, right? And so, we need to make sure that we include everybody, to make sure that we do have spaces that are safe for folks. And it says here, outdoors temporarily. We need to have those resources so that it is temporary for them, and then they can get more permanent housing, and what does that look like? But let's create the infrastructure that is actually accessible and has the foundation, and not just build something for the sake of it, and then build it as we go, and taxpayer money goes down the drain, as we have already seen it. So, let's be real intentional about the decisions that we're making for community and on behalf of community, and making sure that that community as well, the unhoused, have a voice at the table as well.
Thank, thank you. So, I would love for my opponent to answer the question, because she didn't quite answer the question. It says, should the city set up more safe, safe outdoor spaces? And if so, where in your district? So, I think when you're talking about safe outdoor spaces, I've actually not been opposed to it, but if you've heard me in the dais, I say that when you look at the district, we have some housing development that they want to put up in the area, and we had the federal government have a developer come out and tell the developer that they actually couldn't build, because we're already kind of verging on the concentration of poverty in the district, right? So, for me, I say, I will support outdoor spaces when we put them in more different areas of the city, in more affluent areas of the city, and I will be in line to get the next safe outdoor space when that happens. Thank you.
Okay. I think we'll have time at the end, if you guys want to rebut other questions or questions that have come up. Question six. Being a sanctuary city seems to come with some downsides, like losing 11 and 1/2 million dollars for the rail trail, which was recently canceled by the Department of Transportation. If elected, will you support the sanctuary city status to protect our immigrant community, given the potential funding losses? And I think, Teresa, this goes to you.
Absolutely, yes. I'm a daughter of an immigrant, absolutely. I have already advocated and worked with so many organizations here in the city of Albuquerque and have testified at the state level for policies to protect our immigrant community. I'm a first generation. Our immigrant community should be protected and have the rights to live here and have the support and not be attacked by ICE or kidnapped by ICE, and we need to make sure that we continue to be an immigrant-friendly city. Let me, let me talk about the downsides of losing the funding for 11.5, the 11.5 million dollars. I work for a federally funded program for Maryland, it is about 95% federally funded. Every day, we are worried that the president is going to cut our funding. We've already lost several grants, as it is already. My job could potentially be on the line tomorrow, right? Thank God I still have my job and I can still keep it until, you know, hopefully our funds don't get cut. This is something that's being faced across the nation, right? But this is, I think, a tactic to instill fear, so then that way, we eliminate being an immigrant-friendly city and not be able to stand up. And so, we need to stand strong in where we are, we will not be intimidated, we will not be bullied. And we need to create policies that are further more and more protection for our community, which means unmasking ICE and holding them accountable, which you are already seeing that in California. I recognize that this is a huge hit for us, right? Like, this is an investment from community for the rail trail, but let's find other resources, as we are at my federal job right now, or my, my job, is finding other sources of funding, and we can do that, right? Reaching into foundations, those larger corporations, I don't know what it is, that we need to apply our bigger grants in order to support this, but this is a fear tactic, and unfortunately, I will not be intimidated, and we need to continue to remain an immigrant-friendly city.
So, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I sponsored the reaffirmation of being an immigrant-friendly city in the city of Albuquerque, I thought it was important. I have family in-laws who are immigrants, my, many of my neighbors in the Alamosa Neighborhood Association are immigrants, I hear them, we, you know, I know some of the issues that they, that they're facing, and it's really a terrible time in the United States of America that we're actually going through this now. And if I'm elected, what I would absolutely, I mean, this has been part of my platform since, since being elected, so I would say yes.
Yes, I do support our immigrant-friendly city, and I would stand up, as you know, voting has consequences, and we know that by what's happening at the, at the federal level here. 2026 is next year, we have to get our House and our Senate back, voting has a consequence. And I believe that immigrants here are, play a vital role in our economy and everything. Again, when there is violation of the law, regardless if they're immigrant or non-immigrant, which most of the ones that were, are non-immigrants that are breaking the law, so they should be treated to the fullest extent of the law, but I will fully support immigrant-friendly. And I, yes, we have 11.5 million lost the rail trail, yes, that there, if it doesn't get done this year, if it has to wait another year, you know, it's not going to end the world here, Albuquerque's still going to thrive. But we have to stand for our principles. If we don't stand for our principles, then what do we stand for? And I also believe that, you know, we will have a change, I hope, in 2026, and someone is not going to be president forever. We will get our new president. I was honored to be, I was honored to go to Chicago to nominate Kamala Harris, and unfortunately, swing states voted differently. But I believe our immigrant here are playing a vital role in our economy, and they do a great job. And the ones that do break the law, prosecute them to the fullest extent of the law, along with every native person that lives here as well. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Penya, I believe this one's for you. District Six Councilor Rogers started a pilot project to allocate her one point five million dollars of set-aside funds to allow the community to participate in her budgeting process. This resulted in community-based needs being met. What do you think of the, this approach, and will you set up a participatory budgeting method in your district?
Thank you for the question. So, yeah, she implemented it this past year. I think it was very helpful to the community. The only thing is, is that, so I do support it, yes, absolutely. I actually let Ms. Council Rogers know that I thought that was really pretty cool. I think she did a great job. So, I mean, I could end it there. But, yes, I would be interested in doing, in doing something like that in the district. The only thing is, is that when we ask the community, we have to be prepared as a city, though, is to understand that when we ask the community what their needs are, as you can see here, just constituents alone, there's lots of needs. So we always have to be, I think, open and transparent about the reality of what we can and cannot fund in the district, right? It, it's just, it's just part of the reality. You know, we have a certain budget in the city of Albuquerque. I've been the community, community, the committee of the whole chair several times. And when you look at the budget, everybody sees that, well, we have over a billion-dollar budget, but, but really, all those items, they're for staff, they're for programs that we have existing, and there's really a finite amount of money left for us to distribute amongst nine councilors. And this is where the rubber meets the road in terms of really identifying certain projects in, in the district. For me, and I'm just giving you the real quick example, when we talk about the Westgate Community Center, that project was needed. We needed a community center. We didn't have a real large community center in the Westgate area. And when you look at, there's times where we've had four million dollars to distribute amongst nine councilors. When you look at that and you ask me, "Where do I put the money?", I put it into the Westgate Community Center, knowing that some of these other issues needed to be addressed, but, and working with other partners and doing the things that you need to do. But there's really not just this trough of money that, that you can just go to and do the things you need to do. So just want to make sure that it, there's realistic expectations.
Yes, I, I was, I saw that with Councilor Rogers, and I thought that was a great idea to get her community involved and to have them decide what their priority is. And to me, that is very important, that you get community engagement, because they know what their needs are, and to get them involved in the decision process has more buy-in when the community decides how that money is spent. Because reality is, it's your taxpayers' money. Every one of us who pay taxes, that's our money that, and for the community to make their priorities, what their number one and number two priority is, I think it means a lot. You get buy-in from the community, and there's no favoritism of, "I'm going to support this for this person or that." There's no, it's non-bias. This gives the community a choice of what their needs are. And to add to that, you know, we have this beautiful, like Clarissa, Council Penya said about the community center, one thing I would like to see is, why don't they have it open seven days a week, where you spend all this money on this infrastructure, but it's only open five and a half days a week instead of the full seven days when everyone could really enjoy it on the weekend, like Saturday and Sunday? You know, people work during the week, and they don't have time to go from seven to eight o'clock for an hour, two hours, but, you know, Saturday and Sunday open eight or twelve hours a day would be awesome. But I do think, I do like Councilor Rogers' way of doing this, and I would implement it. I would also do the same thing if I was elected city council. I would get that community engagement to decide where that money goes to. Thank you.
So this is a great question, because when I saw Councilor Rogers posting about this and, and posting photos on her social media, I was super happy about it, because that is the type of work that I do, right? And so I'm excited that she's setting the example for all of us, where that is the work that I also do on the commission. It is important to have community members at the table and deciding where funding is going, where they feel that they are part of the decisions, which is the goal for District Three. And, you know, Councilor Penya had named, you know, maybe some barriers in understanding the funding, but I feel that there's always innovative ways where we can make sure that community is included and have a voice on how funding is being used, especially for the needs like infrastructure to better serve community and lighting, creating more jobs, rezoning, so a number of things. And, you know, as I'm going in, I'm going to need my community to guide me in the needs that they need, and this is the, probably the best way to do it, is to have these meetings and actually have the meetings where they're accessible, right? So not holding them during the day, maybe on the weekend, on a Saturday, where folks aren't working, definitely not after hours. So being mindful of people to make sure that it's, that we also do a good communication, community-wise, so people can actually attend and not create more barriers for them as we are trying to decide what's best for community. So I love what she's doing. Like I said, she's setting a great example for all of us, and I'm excited to continue that work for city council, as I have already done for the, the commission here, where we also have conversations about funding for our programs, requests, and presenting in front of City Council Penya and everybody, that we have already, you know, I'm already continuing that work, so I look forward to doing that for city council of District Three.
Okay, we have a couple minutes extra time. So Chris, if you had a question you wanted to ask either of your opponents, what would it be? And then we'll give the respondent a minute.
My question would be then, what would you do to make the community center open seven days a week? So everyone can enjoy it and not have to only go Monday through Friday and only half a day on Saturday?
So, again, you know, this is kind of what I went into, because it's easy when you're running to be able to say all these things, right? But when you're actually in office, it's harder to answer some of your questions, because there's some realities associated with it. And to be transparent and to be clear about what we're doing when we're doing the budget, I would love that. One of the things I'm advocating for is to really be able to not have a limit on the amount of students. So one of the things we're focusing on in the budget and working with the administration on is to ensure that we have enough adequate staff to address the students that needed during the summer. So we are working on that. But as for seven days a week, you know, that, it's a budget, it's a budget, it's a budget item, and, and, again, the amount of money there is already would actually, it's, it's just, it's just hard to do. I mean, and for you to be able to do something like that seven days a week, is it unattainable? No, it's not. But you would have to have some line items that you would like to cut in order to be able to accomplish that, which I think would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Garcia, what would you ask an opponent?
Gosh, there's a lot of questions that are coming to mind on language, but, well, you know, since you spoke about the visitor's center, can you tell us when, you know, how much money has been invested since after the thirteen million and when that visitor's center is actually going to be open and hopefully be open seven days a week, like Mr. Sadio had mentioned, and is accessible to community? So what does that timeline look like for the visitor's center?
So, so the visitor's center is actually, right now, it's under the auspice of the city, and Director Sanchez is the one that, just like this facility is an open seven days a week, there's staffing issues, very much like the community centers, there's the issue of staffing and the resources to have enough resources to adequately staff any of our cultural assets that we have, whether it be the Albuquerque Museum, any of the assets that we have, that we have. So I don't have, I mean, the thirteen million to me is small. It was actually really, for the square footage of that building, it's really actually pretty small, and like I was telling you, with the pool in North Domingo Baca, fifty million-dollar investment, and for us to be, be putting an investment of thirteen million dollars, the first cultural asset in a marginalized community, I mean, it's like a no-brainer, right? And we talk about not having places for, for our community, people to, people to be able to go to places, you know, have a museum. I'm, I'm very proud of it. In terms of the money that's been added, there's been some resources put in to fix some of the things that were, that weren't fixed. But when we build a building, we didn't build it with all the assets inside, all the museum contents and stuff. So the city of Albuquerque is actually using money to be able to buy all those things. If you drive out there now, you'll see the infrastructure going in for the signed graveyard that we have there. So I hope I answered your question. Well, I'm happy to continue to answer it. Okay, I would, I, I think I would like to ask, ask them both, since I got double duty on the questions, right? So I would just like to ask both of them about the visitor's center and what you think about the visitor's center, and what's your position on it?
Okay, well, I think the visitor's center has many potentials. One of the things, they build a thing so that it can have entertainment in the second floor, but I think they need management that knows how to run the business of entertainment there, that can manage it, because it has potential. Although I would say that one of the other things that they need to do is, the parking is not fit for an entertainment venue there. They need to work on the parking issue there to increase that. But I think if they get good management over the visitor's center, that they could actually make money and not lose money like it is now. Thank you.
So my thought about it is, it's way too far out. It is all the way mile nine, so keep going, you know, far, far west central, past one hundred and fourteenth street, and it's actually not right, not quite close to the freeway either, or I forty. So my thoughts on it is, I think the idea was there. However, the foundation is what was missing, where we needed to make sure that if we're going to be investing thirteen million dollars, that it actually had the foundation to thrive. And what I've heard from community members is we have a lot of community members that were, that could have potentially been business partners, right? Like local breweries, bringing food there, food trucks, local artists, we have santeros, we have so many amazing local native artists. It could have, the idea was there, but the foundation, I think, is lacking, where community doesn't really see a purpose. And this is what I get from talking to constituents. This is not personal. And so we need to, to really listen to community that they don't really fully understand the visitor's center and make sure that when we do create infrastructure that is centered around community needs. Right now, I don't think it's meeting it.
Okay.
So just to answer those two.
We need to start closing statements.
Well, I'll use that as my closing statement then.
Okay, when it's your turn. We'll get, I think you get to start closing statements, Ms. Garcia.
Well, thank you all so much again for making time to come out here on a Monday night and giving all three of us the time for District Three. I think it's, it's a district, we exist, right? And we need your support to make sure that we get voter turnout. We're at nine percent. We need community to vote to make sure that we have the representation and leadership that District Three deserves. As I mentioned, I am a daughter of a Vietnam War veteran. I helped my father get his hundred percent disability after he passed. My mother is taken care of. My mother's a immigrant from Paraty, Chihuahua. I have two beautiful boys, biracial. And so I do a lot of community work here in the city of Albuquerque. You will see me in front of city council. You will see me at the state legislature. You will see me at protests. I am active within my community, and I would fail to mention earlier that I was also the Southwest Community Policing Chair as well. So I have been intentional about the work that I've been doing around community, and I look forward to serving those in District Three and making sure, again, like I said earlier, that folks in District Three are able to live in the district, work in the district, and thrive in the district, and we can't do that alone. We need to do it together across systems, statewide, local, county, and making sure that we're, you know, city council in the District Three that community is seeing and felt heard and making those changes. And thank you again just for your time and the opportunities, so that way you can learn more about me. And if you are willing to support and volunteer, please sign up on my website at thesfrdistrictthree.com. And if you would also like to donate, I am a grassroots campaign. I would love your support and contribution. I am a privately financed candidate. I am the one door knocking, and I need as much support as possible to make sure that voters in my district are coming out to vote and make sure that it does not go to a runoff. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me tonight. I really appreciate being here, you know? These forums have been very interesting, and they're kind of across the board, you know, in terms of what the audience that you're, you're in front of, you know? I, I do, I pride myself on being very transparent and very honest with no matter who I am, I am in front of. I just want to say that, you know, I look forward to serving District Three. When last time, I mentioned it earlier, it'll be the last time I run for city council District Three, whether I'm out in November, December, or whether I have one more term. And I just wanted to mention, you know, when we talk about some of the things that, that Ms. Tedessa actually prides herself on, I actually am the one that established the CPCs. That was my legislation. And, and for the domestic violence, that was my legislation as well that I put forward. So I'm really glad that it's really created opportunities in the community for people to participate and be part of, be part of our local government. I'm not going to end on the visitor's center. I think it speaks for itself. I think it's just an amazing facility. It does have all the potential in the world, and the struggle that, that the community, not me, but the community, has had to get people to believe in that facility has been really difficult. So we have a certain amount of money to operate the facility now, but we're actually looking at next year of getting the operators to do exactly what Mr. Sadio said about it having lots of potential. And when you talk about it being on the top of Nine Mile Hill and so far out there, it's actually not. This is the funny thing about it, and what community members laugh about, is that it's actually only, it's closer to downtown than like the balloon fiesta. It's, it's called Nine Mile Hill because it's only nine miles from, from the heart of downtown, and it predates the city of Albuquerque by three years, yet it's by itself out there because it's lacked that investment and disinvestment in the community. So, thank you. I appreciate being here. And again, Clarissa Penya running for city council District Three. Thank you.
Again, good evening, and thank you all for being here. It was my honor to be here, to give you my perspectives. I believe that, you know, we need new leadership, different, I have, I bring unique leadership, different perspectives, different ideas, and my belief is getting to know the people in my community and to give them a voice. To me, that's very important, and I think we've had lack of, of communications within the community. I am also, as Tedessa, a private finance running, so any donations or support there would be greatly appreciated. I'm also, anyone who would like to volunteer to help this veteran on this race would be welcome anytime. But again, I think it's all about trust and leadership, bringing new perspectives, new ideas to this. And you can go to my website as well. It's votechrisadio.com. If you have any more questions, you can go email me at votechrisadio@gmail.com. And my website has my cell number as well. Thank you again for being here, and it was my honor to talk to you today. And thank you for your participating, being here.
I want to thank all our candidates. I wish you all the best in your race. Thank you for coming out tonight. This is the last of our city council candidate forums. We'll start our public school board forums in two weeks. Next week is a really special meeting. We will have some experts here on artificial intelligence, so don't miss that. And we'll see you next week. Thank you very much, and thanks again, candidates. Appreciate you.